Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the meeting of the, like the meeting of the city council in Southfield for Monday, May 21st, 1949, at 1:00 PM.
Thank you. Mr. Mott?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Mr. Kaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Mr. Seymour. Ms. Seymour, excuse me. I'm sorry, Ms. Seymour. You have seven months.
I thought it was a little bit.
I love my glasses, honey.
I understand.
All right, Mr. Schrempf?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Council President, members of council. The reason we're here tonight is pretty well summarized as follows. We look forward to presenting the recommended budget for review and discussion by the mayor and city council as we together renew our commitment to the long-term sustainability of the city of Southfield as an independent and thriving municipality and consider the proposed budget in that context. As I was preparing for this evening, I thought I would contact history books a little bit to get in the mood, to get some wisdom. First, I looked at a noted statesman, Winston Churchill, and Winston Churchill said, "Gentlemen, we've run out of money. Now we must think." And I think we, in fact, have been thinking hard and long since 2004, our first five-year financial plan, when we really looked into the future and knew we had some challenges. Of course, no one knew the magnitude of the challenge, but I think, again, we're ready to dig in this evening. And I did also, I didn't think that was enough, so I think maybe I needed to get some help from another source. So I looked into Albert Einstein. He's got lots of quotes. And he said the following. He said, "In the midst of difficulty lies opportunity." That's a good thing. And we've got the difficulty and we've got to look for the opportunity. He said, "One should not pursue goals that are easily achieved. One must develop an instinct for what one can just barely achieve through one's greatest efforts." And we are certainly in that situation. We're right on point there. He indicated that imagination is more important than knowledge. Knowledge is limited. Imagination encircles the world. And so we know and we've said that we have to get creative, we have to look for new approaches. Then he said, "Not everything that can be counted counts and not everything that counts can be counted." And that's certainly true. And we have to think of the intangibles, and we do. This is part of the reason that we have fought hard to avoid layoffs in this city because we think of the world at large and our people and their families, and we try to reduce the misery index and not add to it. Then he said, "The hardest thing to understand is the impacts." And I thought, "Well, then the second hardest is assessments, assessing data and assessing practices." Then he said, "Politics is far more complicated than physics." I'll leave that alone. Finally, he said, "Everything should be made as simple as possible, but not one that's simpler." So with that, I have an exhibit I would ask our city clerk to pass around. It's the yellow sheet that's under your blue sleeve there, if you would please. I'm hoping in this exhibit that we can take some of the issues that we've been discussing for quite a while and reframe them with some data, which will make it more, make us more effective at telling our story. The complexities that surrounds our situation and need to be framed, I believe, in a way where we can more effectively tell our story and hopefully get some changes in approaches on the legislative level. Starting, a good starting point would be, of course, a commitment to full funding, replacement funding for any personal property tax losses that might come out of the legislation that is currently being considered. So what I did is I, my main theme here is that these cities are creating jobs. Cities like ours, cities like Troy, cities like Farmington Hills, that have significant commercial development and office development and industrial are getting hammered. And those that are in a, basically in bedroom communities have disproportionately turned, you know, gotten at least not as much of a hit. So I thought I would take three cities that are well-known for their commercial activities and are near us, nearby, as well as a well-run nearby city that is 97% residential and only 3% commercial. If you look at the data at the top, you will see that since 2000 beginning and 2009, 2010, we have had four successive years of some rather significant and serious downward trends in our taxable values. The main reason for that has been a combination of residential and commercial. But if you look at 2012, '13, we have a figure of 11%, and that bears some discussion. That's comprised of the 6.4% of our total tax base that the assessor has on the rolls as of January 31st, 2012. However, we know that there are a number of commercial appeals in process, and we have to recognize the potential liability for those appeals. And that is 4.6%, or we generally refer to this as 6% and 5%. So that's where the 11% comes from. So you'll see that the city that has the greatest amount of commercial, that's us, we're 37% residential, 63% commercial and other. Commercial, other is industrial and personal property. So you see that we're taking a cumulative 41.9% dip in a four-year period. And frankly, 2013, '14, we're looking at the potential of another eight and a half percent. So if you look at Troy, basically Troy is 61% residential, 39% commercial, but they still have a significant commercial tax base. And you'll see that they've taken over a 24% hit in the last four years. I'll take a look at Farmington Hills. Farmington Hills is 65% residential, 35% commercial, and they have taken a hit of 34.2%. Then we look at Huntington Woods, and we see they're 97% residential, 3% commercial. And I'd venture to say a very small percentage of their commercial would be personal property. So they're, although I know they care because they show up at various professional association meetings and they always contribute to the discussion, they have a good reputation for being a well-run city, and, but they don't have much at issue when it comes to personal property. We do. 15% of our tax base is commercial, or is personal property. And as we'll see later, there's a significant effect. In 2013, '14, we are anticipating a $750,000 hit due to elimination of all personal property for businesses with under $40,000 of taxable value in, in personal property. Personal property is machinery and equipment used in business. And so that means that any business with under $80,000 worth of equipment, this taxable value is one-half generally of market value, will be excluded, and that's quite a few businesses. So that's 750 in year one, and there are no plans that we're aware of to replace any of those funds. So we take a look at Troy, 24%, Farmington Hills, 34, and then 9.6 for a community, 97% residential. During that time, they did have a tax increase of the Huntington Woods debt. As a matter of fact, their total tax, taxable value, or the total property tax million is 25, so it's more than ours. Excuse me. So there, when, when the newspapers write up their budget for 2012, '13, there's some interesting information. It says, "All cities have quite a bit of financial uncertainty going forward," the city manager said, "but we have been fortunate that we haven't faced the same measure, the same massive cuts that others have." Then they talk about their workforce being reduced by 37% since 1990. Our figure is 24%, but we're only counting from 2004. So if we go back to 1990, I'm sure that we're, we're probably on pace with those kinds of numbers. They talk about continued concessions. We're going to be talking about the same thing. Tax revenues are projected to be up. That's a combination of, we didn't get much of a hit, we had a millage increase. And then they say some things that it would be nice to be able to say, such as, "Things seem to be leveling off and property values appear to be stabilizing. Looks like the great recession is imminent and brighter days are ahead." We look forward to being able to verbalize those, those kinds of sentiments. They talk about road bonds and road concerns about road, road issues. We share those. And basically, if they want to get streets done faster, they're deteriorating faster than we can replace them. We totally agree with that. So all municipalities have things in common, and any responsible municipality is basically concerned with infrastructure and roads, and everyone's in full agreement. Certainly, the, the road financing, which is at the same level as it was 10 years ago, is woefully inadequate. When you talk about the, some of the product use have increased dramatically, and the cost of one lane mile of road has increased 63% in the last, since in the last 10 years. With that, I think what we can do with this is, I think we, we can assert that the current mix of legislation and taxation creates an adverse situation and frankly punishes the job creators, that it's unfair and unbalanced. And I'm hoping that this kind of information will help us to be able to send our message more, more effectively. With that, I'd like to turn to the booklet and go through the highlights, move around a little bit through the pages, and then we'll be glad to answer any questions or any concerns that council might have. And of course, we're looking for creative, creative approaches. The big picture for us in terms of what we're facing, unprecedented, in the city's 50-plus years history, we've never had a decrease of even 3% on our taxable values. The 3% was the starting figure in '9, '10, and it's each year, successive years, got tougher to the point that we're talking about basically 42% at this point in four years. Uncharted waters, the uncertainty created by the commercial appeals is an especially difficult challenge for us. We're going to have to constantly monitor and follow them. We're going to have probably more budget adjustments than we've had in the past. We will have an adjustment at the end of this fiscal year to ensure that we bring the, the reserves that we need to forward into the budgets so that we don't have any funds that have a technical deficit because that causes the state, it causes extra work and is a negative as far as the state's concerned. The details of the plan, the key details, we have not used fund balance for operations. You'll see later that there's a fund balance draw, but that is for, as a reserve against appeals, commercial appeals. General fund expenditures are down 1,007 or 2.5%. The total budget, 68.4 versus 66.7 in the previous year. Total budget is essentially flat, a difference of 231,288 is basically, has to do with grants and increase in cable revenues due to the franchise. Infrastructure investments are up nearly 2 million or 25%. Public Works has presented us with 20 projects totaling 10 million, 010, and that's an increase of 25% over the 18 projects that we had planned for 2011, '12. Continued emphasis on community appearance and code enforcement. We're going to be asking for a minor ordinance change in the future. This year, the weather caught us, got us behind a little bit because there's certain deadlines that involve the month of May, and we may be talking about moving forward to April. That will be coming forward as we have to do some homework yet. But we are, we are very much concerned with keeping the appearance of the city and with any vacant homes not having the appearance of being vacant. Training remains funded. We're asking people to do more with less. I know that's getting to the kind of old, old slogan or old phrase, but it's true. And you can't do that effectively without providing the necessary skills. In terms of revenues, we are projecting an 11% decline in our taxable values. 6.04% for the tax rolls. That's Mr. Tejarena's tax roll figure as he submits. He submitted on January 31st. We have agreed that it's reasonable to put an allowance in of roughly 5% for tax appeals. That would, will be our responsibility after January 31st, and they carry all the way through August and go against the fiscal, the preceding fiscal year. So the fund balance draw is from the equalization reserve that is set aside to handle appeals in the general fund. We have detail coming up on that. Fees and charges are up about 2.3%. And that basically is a function of a new fee that we've instituted and assessing a piece of it for transfers that are not filed in a timely manner. State shared revenues are up almost 8%, and that's because we were successful in getting 100% of the EVIP, Economic Vitality Incentive Program monies. We weren't sure when we saw the thing that we could achieve 100%, so in this fiscal year, we budgeted only half of that money. But next year, we feel that we are going to get to 100%, and so we, we increased the statutory state shared revenues, and the constitutional, we increased 2% because of a modest improvement in the economy. So we perceive that we need to focus on tax base enhancement while simultaneously reducing operating costs as the key to the city's long-term sustainability and independent driving of this balance. Turn to page three, equalization reserves. This is for appeals. I might add that we have very few residential appeals simply because of the decline in the residential values are such that most folks understand the situation and are not coming in for a few more bucks off. Their taxes have, per city, theirs has decreased significantly, and they're aware of that. So most of our appeals are in the, the commercial area. And so we have set aside in the general fund 4,780,956. So we're gonna, we're programming to use almost half of that in the next year. We hope that this is only going to last two years. That's what we feel. This is the worst two years coming up, and things should level off. Then you have a, a number that I want to draw your attention to in the box, 486,981. That is the unassigned general fund fund balance, which is 8 tenths of 1%, and it's just about as tight as you can run a ship. The bond rating agencies like to see 10%, so we're less than 1%. And the Government Finance Officers Association likes to see 20%. So we have to tightly manage things. We aren't doing so. We anticipate that in this fiscal year, we will have a favorable variance from budget, meaning that we will outperform the budget. When the auditors come to take a look at where we are at June 30th for operations, we, we believe we'll outperform the budget. We had a number of vacancies during the fiscal year, and we did not spend the money. Showing below are the reserves of the various quote-unquote outside departments, departments other than the general fund. Major streets has a reserve, locals, Parks and Rec, and library. The total that's set aside for these appeals is nearly $7 million. I might add, when we do the budget adjustment this year and we bring monies out of these pots into various budgets, okay, the reason we're doing it at the end of the year is it can't be spent, okay? It can only be expended. Not that anyone would do that, but we don't, we don't want to even put a temptation there. And also, the numbers is, the closer to the end, the more accurate your numbers will be. But if they're, if we bring money into the budget that is not needed for appeals, that money falls right back in to the equalization reserves for the various funds. So I want council to have a comfort level that when we make these adjustments, that we don't want to come short because then you get a technical deficit, then it gets reported to the state, then the state sends you a letter, then you have to respond with a plan, and it's extra, it's an extra effort, and it's a negative on the city. So we are going to bring an amount that is sufficient. One of the things that a responsible government does is looks at infrastructure constantly and does what they can do on the infrastructure side and not just operations of, on the street services. We have $10 million of capital projects planned. Nothing is automatic about these projects. When council approves the budget, that doesn't give anyone the authority to do anything except come back to council. And it does give the purchasing agent and those in the departments, engineering, et cetera, to work on bids. But everything comes back to city council and has to be re-justified, but this is the plan. And we're looking at 1,006 in major street work. Most of these are projects that are either federal or state government, and we have a small piece in comparison. Generally, we're, we're below 50%. Usually around 10, 25% is our participation level. So we are getting a lot of work done for, for 1,006. Water and sewer is in good shape. Frankly, they've always built the capital portion in their budget. Good for them. They deserve a lot of credit for that. And in times when, when times are a little bit better, we boosted the capital up a little. And so this year, we're hammering the rates down. They got nearly a 9% pass-through from the agencies that supply water and sewer services. And we are going to get the cost to the, to the consumer, to the customer, no, an increase of no more than 5%. So we'll be working together on that. Just because people are hurting at the number 5% sounds a lot worse than a number close to 5%. So the detail of each budget, there's a paragraph on each. They're available for your review anytime, but we will, we will be coming back to these descriptions when we come back to council with, with the particular project. Transmitting letters required for charter, that's next pages nine through 17. They reflect the priorities and concerns that are embedded within the proposed budget. Mayor Lawrence reviewed the transmit letter at the May 7th field meeting, that letter's a result of thorough inspection of the budget, thorough discussion of the budget, and the transmit letter, if you haven't had a chance to read it, both of them are worth reading, but I think that especially the mayor's transmit letter has a lot of material in it that is high priority and has some good suggestions. Forging ahead to the next section, which is budget knowledge summary. This is our annual one-page, of the budget all in one page. And what it reflects is, we provided the last year's budget. We'll get into a excruciating detail in footnotes about anything that has a variance of 5% in any of the budgets, but we also provided last year's just for, for reference and frame of, compare reference. Page 18. Okay, so what you see on the left side of the revenues is a 2.460, 586 draw for fund balance. That is for, strictly for appeals, and if it's not necessary, it falls, falls back in the fund balance. There's a similar amounts, there are similar amounts in the outside funds. For example, the library has 2,42,630 for appeal costs. Parks and Rec, 215,000. And so they're, they're providing for appeals, and frankly, they're also taking some fund balance for operations, but they're working to get out of that habit. They do have a stronger fund balance posture, so there is some tolerance for them using some fund balance at this point, but we, they're, they're well aware that the goal is that the operations of, of any department should not be using fund balance. Fund balance should be for one-time projects of a capital nature or of a contingency nature. What does happen in the process is we fine-tune these numbers, and June 18th, we come back with any changes. They're documented, and normally, they're not very significant. The city assessor's numbers get reviewed by the county and the state, right? And they come back, and usually, they, they don't do much with them. They may make a, they may make a change here and there, but the numbers that Mr. Tejarena submits get, get approved, and we get a one, a one classification or a one point, point O factor, which is what you want as, as your assessments are good. In our history, we've only received one factor, I'm aware of, and in fact, they said, you're, at that time, years ago, that our assessments were in fact, a tad low, so they wanted to give us some additional funding, and we said, "Okay, but we're setting that funding aside for neighborhood projects." And we And we did do that and that's how we use those monies. So, we anticipated one factor on our assessments. Block grant will be changed, it should read five fifteen to eleven. That takes into account reprogrammed funds. We didn't have those numbers at the time, so that will be adjusted. The NSP has increased and that is due to NSP three. And that was awarded basically on the merits of performance to take on the NSP one program. You see, the total is essentially flat to last year. And any increase is basically due to grants. And you'll see later, there's a significant increase in cable and that's because of new Turning to page twenty. Looking at our millage and our revenues that are created by the millage. Millage six point six oh nine four, this is for general operations. That's the rollback seven percent, or seven mills we're at on charter maximum. The rollback is due to Headley, the effect of Headley in years where there was major growth. Police and Fire is a rollback seven, that's six point eight nine oh six. And that is the same situation. Total of thirteen point five for operations. Police and Fire Pension, nearly four mills. That's actuarial requirements. Those funds are single-purpose and cannot be used for any other reason. And we have a habit here of obeying our actuaries. Some cities take it with actuarial reports and that's a one-way road to trouble. So, we may, we may, we may challenge the actuaries, but when the exercise is done, whatever number they give us is where, is how we construct the budget. Residential Street Millage, Maintenance, one mill. What we did with that is when we had the public safety millage increase, a successful election, we did a Headley override in the middle of that language. And so, we got residential streets up to one mill. That's their max. Parks and Rec, we got up to their, their max of one point seven five. And Library got an increase to two point eight. Public Act two ninety-eight is affectionately referred to as the quote-unquote garbage millage. And we use those for actual cleanup and appearance issues on our roadsides. Fifty-nine is a new millage. For some number of years, cities have been allowed to assess up to fifty thousand dollars for, to encourage tax-based, tax-based growth. Up until now, we have maybe been, didn't find the need for it. Now, we're gonna use it, we're incorporating it in. It's a very small number, it's way over to the right of the decimal, but it's why you see a new, a new source listed, two ninety-eight slash fifty-nine. Drains at Large, that's an increase and we're gonna, on the next page, we'll get into the changes and why they're there and what accounts for the changes. The County Drains at Large is the drains that, that were responsible for funding in terms of maintenance and debt. It's a small amount, but you're gonna see on the next page, it is an increase substantially. Taxable valuations, we've used for this purpose, an eleven percent reduction. The top number is what we live off of, basically. That's what, what all the funds have to use as their basis for their, for their tax revenues. The other numbers have to do with the independent agencies such as the DVA, that have their own funding source. We just showed them all down eleven. When you look at Mr. Tijerina's numbers and when we get into some final numbers, when they come in from, from the state, he's got some of these numbers down even more than a hundred percent. So, some of these outside agencies got in pretty substantially. But we're using eleven percent as our decrease for the top number, which is what we fund the general fund, P and R, Library, et cetera. That's, that's what we use. Police and Fire, next page, you'll see that the only changes are for the actuarial requirements that Police and Fire pensioned, they've gone up substantially. And that has to do with a squating effect, four-year look-back on investments. So, you've got investments in there. You've got the other factors. I believe also that the reduction in the number of people participating causes the rate to have to go up for the, because this rate's assigned to each, each employee, so that has an effect as well. But it's basically investment returns that will carry the day here. Public Act two ninety-eight is up slightly. We already talked about that. Drains at Large is up substantially. The reason for that is maintenance on aging drains, county water resource repairs, we can't ignore the infrastructure. And I asked Mike Kabowski, well, what happens if you don't deal with this? And he says erosion, malfunctions, possible road collapse. And I said, okay, I've heard enough. We are closely monitoring this, significant increase. When you see the total tax levy, we are up four point eight percent. But since most residents' valuations have dropped seven percent, most residents receive a slight decrease in their city taxes. Page twenty-two is the twenty-year history of the millage. And you will see that we are at the highest level in twenty years. And that again, is a function of the fact that our, the other side of the equation is millage times value, times taxable value equals revenues. And that's, that's, that explains the increase. It's to overcome the tax-based erosion, basically, and maintain services. We look forward to the day when tax base is increased because we can reduce the levy as the tax base increases. Next page basically shows where the tax dollars go or what they cover. Since, since job one is public safety, it's reasonable to take the tax revenues and say, well, they're first going to public safety and then whatever's left over, those other functions. Basically, that the cost of public safety essentially, pretty much takes care of the total tax revenues in the general fund. It's a fact of life, it doesn't make it wrong. It's simply that we have to understand that the rest of the functions are funded by state shared revenues, fees and charges, and court revenues also, although court revenues generally match the core expenses. They, they cover their expenses and usually a little bit more. So, basically, what, what, what the other functions count on is state shared revenues and, and fees. So, this is why we get so down, downhearted on state shared revenues because they're forty percent less than they were ten years ago, even though they've increased eight percent of the share, the number was worse than forty before. So, we're hoping they're on their way up. They've got a long way to go to get to the levels that they, they were ten years ago. In terms of our police and fire, right now, our generally accepted numbers for sworn police and fire, which were re-justified or at least reviewed at five years ago in some studies, one hundred and sixty police, one hundred and six firefighters. We currently have on staff one hundred and thirty-four sworn, so we're twenty-six down, that's sixteen percent. And the fire, one hundred and six, where you have ninety-two, down fourteen, that's thirteen percent. The rest of the city in general is down about twenty-five percent from the levels of two thousand four, two thousand five. Next, we turn to the, page twenty-four, tax revenue factors. General operating, you see the difference in what is costing us, all the funds that we don't have to work with. Almost two million dollars in general, due to general operating millage and et cetera, down, down the list. The only, the only increase is in the police and fire millage revenues and that goes into the police and fire millage accounts and cannot be used for any other purpose. On page twenty-five, it's a breakdown of where the tax monies go for a typical home, a valued at a hundred thousand, taxable value fifty thousand. Eight forty-three to police, fire, EMS, eighty-eight to Parks and Rec, eighty-six to Rose Appearance and Drains, Library one forty, all other twenty-nine. That's about three, that's three and a quarter a day, that's actually around three dollars a day, because a typical home now is valued at somewhat less than a hundred, so it'd be taxable value less than forty. So, you're looking at three dollars a day and I think you deliver a pretty good product for three bucks a day. In fact, a very good product for three bucks a day. Property tax, dollar distribution, a typical home, forty, forty percent goes to the city, sixty percent to other purposes, including county, other jurisdictions, and education at sixty percent. Page twenty-seven, the key assumptions that we work with. State shared revenues are per O and B projections and we anticipate the full EVIP dollars this year again. And we're on target with the, we're monitoring the new rules. They apparently are supposed to be more user-friendly, the only problem is when you read them, you can't figure them out. However, we, what we do is we, we deal directly with the Treasury Department, we use their forms, their format and their approach. And since they're the ones that write the checks, that works real well. Treasurers' projection for investment income, everyone knows we're at record-low interest rates, a record-low interest environment. That's good if you're selling bonds, for example, which is something we may have to look at, but I'm not sure it's feasible at all. But I have, I have sent a call in to our bond council to indicate, let's get creative, let's at least look at the potential. Because we're in a record-low environment, we will be coming to council to, to remarket bonds that we have because we can get a interest, interest break. So, that will be something we come, it's a library. Isn't that your library bonds? No, no, that's a, that's a fire, that's a fire, a fire bond, it's outstanding, a refunding facility. So, we'll be coming to council for that and that will save us some money. Fund balance for oper, no use of fund balance for operations in the general fund. Parks and Rec and Library is striving to be in the same situation in the future. Zero percent, obviously. Concessions to be discussed, that will be some homework that we need to do with the mayor and city council during upcoming meetings. Managed attrition program continues. More aggressive monitoring of economic conditions than ever before. And that's just the way it is. Five-year financial planning focus. One of the things we'll be doing in the next month or so is we will be updating the five-year plan, adding a year out and reflecting the audited numbers from the last audit, as well as once this budget's approved, we'll be working with this budget and the five-year Next, we're familiar with this. We reduced our personnel count. This is, this is a rather rigorous exercise, so I'll say about two hundred and five positions. When you get in the FTEs, you're ordering a person, two tenths of an FTE, half of an FTE and things that you get into, like in Parks and Rec, it gets real complicated. But we make a good faith attempt and we're down about twenty-four percent since two thousand four. The next exercise we go through is on the revenue side and the expenditure side, we take a look at comparisons of the previous year and we create footnotes for anything over five percent. Anybody can ask any question about any percent, but, but five percent's our threshold and the footnotes are there, ones that you probably maybe go through these real quick. We know the eleven percent, that has to do with taxable values. Number three is the pension, we've already talked about. Number four, state shared revenues, that's because we got the EVIP money, we increased statutory significantly, it's constitutional, only goes up two percent. Constitutional is a reflection of the economy, but the statutory is the EVIP success that we intend to maintain. Number five, reimbursements is a technical adjustment, a different way of showing a figure that has no meaning in real life. Number six is fees, licenses and permits, and that reflects the fifty thousand new revenues being charged for property transfer fees and also an increase in appearance revenues primarily from vacant homes and recharge banks for work that we do on vacant homes after appropriate notification, et cetera. Number seven, inter-fund reimbursements, that's a change in, that's a technical adjustment, decrease in cross-charges, that's a good thing, we're making the budget less complicated. And also, you can't cross-charge for employees that aren't with you anymore, so that number gets smaller. Number eight is the most significant, and that is that we're budgeting the equalization reserve for commercial appeals and so that's, that's an increase. And that's because the unprecedented level, which reflects, is actually a reflection of the sluggish U.S. economy, that's why people are appealing. They're appealing because they have vacancies or they have issues of income in their buildings and they have to prove these appeals out, they have to prove the economics of it. We put our case forward, they put theirs forward, and it's, it's just a fact of life at this point. We're hoping that this ends in one more fiscal year after this one. The, the approach that we had taken previously is that we had had the previous budget, we assumed that we could absorb most of the appeal costs by savings in the budget. We know we're coming in under, under budget, but we don't think it's gonna be enough to cover all of the costs having to do with these appeals. So, that's why we will likely be coming with an adjustment of the eleven twelve budget in the next month. Looking at the expenditure side, we've got, number one is if you have a small budget, it doesn't take much to get a reduction, this has to do with a, a person going from a family plan to a single plan in medical. Number two, that is reserved for appeals, that's the other side of the two million that we set aside. The human resources, that's gonna be attrition likely, vacancy savings through attrition. Community relations, same thing. Vacancy through attrition, Neighborhood Information Specialist Kerry Case, who retired, and we are, we've taken his work and massaged it around the existing and we are, we've taken his work and massaged it around the existing personnel. And Mr. Rosenthal will tell you it's covered, and if you question whether it's covered or not, he'll give you vigorous, a vigorous answer whether it's covered. Mayor's budget's down a little. Thank you, Mayor, for your contribution. You did the best you could. When you have a small budget, sometimes your small adjustments upward show pluses, so this time it goes the other way. Police budget's down, that's vacancies, nine sworn vacancies. Fire budget isn't down as much because their vacancies occurred over several years. But when you've got a fire budget only going up one percent, that's headed in the right direction. Zero would be better if it were, if it were your contribution. Buildings down thirteen point nine, that is vacancies through attrition. Public Works Administration, that goes down to zero because the folks aren't there to charge the other folks. That's attrition. So meantime, they keep getting the work done. Thank you very much. Overall, we're down two point five percent in the general fund. Moving right along to budget comparisons by function. The general fund is down two and a half percent, as we indicated. Facilities maintenance down fifteen percent. That's going to be a reduction in capital projects. They had a roof project that got finished in eleven twelve. That was a big, that was a big item in your last year's budget. Motor pool is down eight point six percent, and that's basically attrition and depreciation savings through the aging of equipment. Cable is a league leader up, and that is twenty percent, but that is just to balance the budget. They have a, an increase in their, in their revenues, and that money is, comes in on the revenue side and also shows on the expenditure side. However, they cannot spend it because it's capital, and they can't spend it until they come to council to show the need for the capital projects. So if that doesn't happen, then they'll have an under-expended budget on the expense side, and that budget will, that residual will fall to fund balance in the cable. Moving right along, Major Streets Fund up for capital projects as compared to last year. Local Streets down, reason for that is they had to move some money over to Majors. So they're down a bit. Municipal Street goes away, that's a technical. We used to have a fund for appearance monies, and then we'd run it through that fund, and it was an accounting entity. The new approach is get rid of those accounting entities if you can. The auditors and I have, we don't have a dispute on this one, how they show fund balances. The outside funds have become a mystery. Some of their new nomenclature is less than, less than informative, and so we'll be working on assisting the reader in understanding everything new in their terminology. But the municipal street fund goes away, and the monies go directly to the major and local streets appropriately. So there's no real change, it's just methodology. Water and Sewer Fund isn't up five percent, but as we indicated, it's worth a short note that the pass-through from the Water and Sewer Authorities is up nine, nearly nine percent. They submitted a budget of five point oh three increase for the customer. We are working to get that below five percent. People are hurting, and as we say, F I O, figure it out, or if A W, find a way. But we will get it below five percent. Block grant is a technical. We didn't bring in the, the funds that come from the ship program revenues. We will include those in the final budget, so that's just a technical. Energy block grant, it was fully expended and successfully, and so that's showing a decrease, but for good reason. Neighborhood stabilization, we were awarded more dollars, and so that's up significantly. And that's it, so the total budget is basically flat, especially if you take out the grant increases. And it reminds us that we're a hundred and forty-six million dollar operation, and it's big business. Ten-year comparison of grant revenues. Our position on grants is simple, we don't use them for groceries. We don't, we use them unrealistically, and we don't make bad deals that have to do with grants. What you see is in nine, ten, and ten eleven, we had substantial increase in employment grants in nine, ten, and ten eleven as N S P. Otherwise, we've kind of leveled off, and we're not happy that the employment grants have not increased. We, we have made our, we've expressed our concern in that regard on the federal and state levels. Next is our history of our taxable values, and it shows one word, basically unprecedented. Another one, uncertain, what's the other? Unchartered water, non-reletting focus on the tax base. That's, we got it good. All right, so you can go back many more years than this, but if you just go back, what, this is about fifteen years or something. You got, we never had a decrease of more than six tenths of one percent, and that was just prior to Proposal A taking effect. And ever since then, we've done okay, but because we had new construction. But you can see what happens under Prop A when your new construction stops. Reason for that is the Great Recession, as it's called. But what happens? Great Recession stops new construction, and also you have businesses that are hurting because of that economy. So they may, they may appeal to tax values. That's their right to do so, and so the, you see what happens. Unprecedented, but we're going to get through it. Next page. This is the composition of our tax base. This is why we're very concerned about personal property. Most cities, you know, probably because on average, you get like one point five percent personal in the bedroom community. Okay, but we are producing jobs, but we get punished. This is what this exhibit was about, and I, I wanted to discuss it further with the leadership because we need to tell our story, and this, I think, helps to tell a story. Three cities that create a massive number of jobs have suffered greatly because the construct of the rules of the game absolutely punish. We're talking jobs, 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 and jobs, and then we're punishing the cities that create the jobs. So might give someone some material to work with and another concept to hammer on. But this is again, we're, so we're, residential's thirty-five percent, and all the rest is sixty-five, and that's what it's comprised of. The next ugly page is what has happened plus what we project will happen. All right, so you're looking at taxable value on the left, taxable value losses each year. And you're looking over to the right, three percent first year, nine, ten. That's, the reason we start with nine, ten is that's the first year we ever had in our entire history a significant decrease in our total tax base. So that is the unprecedented part of this. Next year, we got clobbered big time, fourteen and a half. And these are, these are in the books, I mean, these are not estimates. Next year, we get clobbered again. That's the year when we went for a millage, unfortunately, it was approved when the voters made third, two thousand eleven. As you'll recall, at that point, it accumulated fourteen, seventeen and a half percent, and staring at another thirteen, we were talking about some, some major layoffs was the only way we could possibly survive going, going forward. Unfortunately, we got the millage, but unfortunately, much of the value of the millage has been eroded by these huge decreases that continue. Nobody expected them to be this big and to be, and to take a hold for such a long period of time. So thirteen point oh two is in the books. So what's in the books is thirty point five two. That's there, you can't do anything about it. Twelve thirteen is an estimate. If we're, if we're super fortunate, it would be maybe six or seven percent, but that isn't going to happen because Mr. Tejerean and I had a talk this morning about it. He said, yeah, we'll be chasing these appeals all during the fiscal year. And he agrees that eleven percent's a fair guess as ending as to where, to where this all ends up. Back in July, on July fourth of eleven, is when we last redid the five-year financial plan. That's when I changed the assumption from six percent to eleven. Sometimes it isn't good to be right, this is one of them. I have no idea where the eleven came from. I knew six wouldn't work, so, but I've never to this day quite known where it came from originally, but it's the way things have worked out. Eight and a half was the number that we put on for thirteen, fourteen, we're hoping that to be wrong. City assessor says the residential's looking either, either flat or maybe even improving a little. Can you say that?
Over the flat.
Okay, flat, okay. But flat is better than negative. And because of appeals still, still in the system, we're, we put eight and a half in there. And if you just total all those up, you get to fifty percent. Since this is a declining balance situation, it's sort of the opposite of how interest works on the way up. So it's not quite fifty point oh two, but it is when you add the numbers up. I try to explain it, some people like the explanation because they're mathematicians, and others start napping very quickly, saying, who cares, it's bad. So when you go there with the nuances, but we don't withhold any information here. Next page has to do with personal property tax. We've already mentioned first year of the proposal that was floating around. And I know that there are others that are on top of it more than I am right now, between my lobbyists and other folks that spent time in Lansing. But I have not heard any relief from this first year hit of seven hundred and fifty thousand, including that every, every property under forty thousand, as is indicated in number point number one under sources. It's still, it's still there. My total personal property is worth about nine million dollars, and if you had the worst case, it'd be a total phase out with zero reimbursement. I don't think that'll happen, but I don't have a lot of security feelings about the replacement revenues. One of the revenue, one of the, the justification for one of the reimbursement schemes was if the state does not reimburse you fully, then you can reinstitute the personal property tax. Now, this is not a water faucet. I mean, you can't just turn it on and turn it off. If you go out of the business, I don't know how you go back into business. Mr. T, what do you think? Would that be a nightmare or what? I mean, how would you go out of the business and then say, okay, now we're going to assess personal property? We have to start all over. I don't know how you do it. I don't know how you do it, so. That was not a real practical solution, but it actually did get articulated. Now, the last two pages are traditional pie charts, show you where the money comes from, pretty much where it goes. If you'd like to look at changes in this, next year, I'm going to put in the previous years along with this, just, just as a point of reference. The increases on the revenue side were state shared revenues went up, and that is because of the E V I P and the two percent increase in constitutional. Property taxes stayed about the same, actually decreased a little because of eleven percent. Some of the categories might be interesting. Community outreach and family services, that's comprised of one half of administration, one half of administration, all of clerk, one half of the law department, all of council, all of the mayor's office, and all of human services. So, you know, if you make a category up that has some logic to it, I mean, you stick with it. But I don't know that anybody's ever asked where those categories came from, but I did today because I forgot where, how we did them. And I, so I, I wanted to check the figures. That one went down a little because of the, a decrease in community relations. No, that one stayed pretty much the same. The one that went down, no, that's right, all of community relations is in there, so it went down again because community relations wasn't. Community and economic development category is comprised of code, business development, building, planning, and a quarter of engineering. So there's some science to this. All funds, we have a small problem. Hopefully, there's, oh, something to there. We got bad numbers, too much, if you passes around, please. Just put this one in. What happened is we had a page number wrong, and when we switched the page number, the old numbers jumped in from the year before. So I was analyzing today, trying to figure out what the changes were, and basically went nuts. There's no way that there's been no changes between last year and this year. So finally figured it out, but, so what's happening there is if you compare it to the year before, water, on the, on the revenue side, state shared revenues are up, taxes are down, except the eleven percent. And water and sewer is up because of the capital projects are up twenty-five percent from last year. On the expenditure side, roads and facilities are basically flat, spending more on roads but less on facilities. Public safety is down seven tenths of one percent, that has to do with vacancies. Water and sewer is up because of the, again, the capital project cost. I would like to suggest one other thing. Tried to put all this in one page. This is my one-page wrap-up. It's on pink paper, we like to use colored. Create a little less headache, keep track of all this stuff. These are kind of the things I thought were things we need to, we need to remember going away from this discussion. First is a, just go around, does everybody have one, or, or there's still one around? I'll wait a minute. We have lots, we should have enough for everyone. Let's do it. Okay. First of all, we need to remember that commercial appeals have two dimensions. They have the immediate effect of occasionally resulting They have the immediate effect of occasionally resulting refunds, at times others smaller. But they also have a long-term downward adjustment to the taxable value. So once that taxable value gets lowered and you're back into the lesser of five percent or the rate of inflation, basically no matter what, once reduced, always reduced, WPW. That's a lawsuit. Name of the plaintiff was WPW. And that was versus the city of Troy, and the net result was a, an ongoing headache for, for cities with, with a lot of commercial. Number two, all funds should endeavor to adopt a target of no use of fund downs for operations. I've become redundant on that one. Actually redundant on a lot of this right there. Further concessions are anticipated. That's redundant. To be determined after a comprehensive discussion with mayor and city council, which will occur in the next few weeks. Number four, two more years of tax base trending downward. The year that this budget covers and one more are anticipated until we can stabilize and begin to expect some growth. Tax base focus is hugely important. We're reminded that new construction comes out from under, under the limits of either proposal A or WPW, so that under new construction, we can take a hundred percent of the value that can be added to the tax base for new construction. The sixth point I would suggest that we walk away with is we need to seek creative breakthroughs and approach to existing commercial properties to either enhance their taxable value or to bring the land to its highest and best use, which I think is a nice way of, of saying maybe some of have to go down by the wrecking ball. We don't exactly know how that's going to happen, how, what our role might be, but we need to be relentless in our, in our desire to get the tax base back to where it belongs, to a much stronger posture to recover from what's happened in the economy, which has been frankly devastating. Continuation of our comprehensive community appearance and code enforcement efforts is key. I'm very proud of the way the city looks. I think, I love, I love the letter that was sent out by Councilman Fricasse because it reminds some outside people that, that have a responsibility to communities that create jobs like ours, make them look good. No dead trees, no bad sod or lack of sod. Grass seed with this netting over, it doesn't work when, especially when the sprinklers aren't installed. I thought it was an excellent letter and, and we appreciate, like we said, say always, every call we get, even if it's crabby, we appreciate. Although some are crabby ones. Very difficult to appreciate, but if there's anything out of that call that we can do better, we're interested. And we can't, we don't see everything that other people see. So we're real serious about seven nine six eyes. We want calls. And we're encouraging people, if they're in doubt, make a phone call. Number eight, explore all means to achieve significant capital improvements, infrastructure and facilities. I don't know what that means exactly, but we're going to look at every avenue. I don't know that there are, there are any frankly. Very discouraged with these Act fifty-one revenues that require us to move money around from here to there and squeeze this and that. Where we never want to end up is where frankly a lot of the cities are getting, and that is that they're turning down money. They're turning down money because they cannot come up with the matching funds. Our million six pretty much is matching funds for the, for the most part. Our, almost our entire capital project list is matching funds, other than the, I think the bridge sheet, bridge monitoring and a couple of other. Yeah. So we're not giving up beating the subject up, but I don't know what we can do with it. But the infrastructure and capital improvements is huge. But in the meantime, what we got's got to look good, and we're very strongly committed to that, and I think code and community appearance people are doing a bang-up job on that. Which by the way, Jerry, can you explain that ordinance you're talking about? Maybe that tweet or is it too early?
Which one?
The one about April rather than May.
I can explain it or, or simple. We're just going to, we're going to attempt to back it up with council approval from May first back to April first each year. Due to this, due to spring hitting in mid-March this year, we took, we took a beating on these, on the grass growth. It was, it was nuts. We're still catching up, and it's, it's, it's a matter of that, that will have added protection to the city on the appearance if we can, if it should happen again, we'll be prepared for it. Simple as that. Back it up a little.
The comments about some of the city-owned properties, we took them to heart. We did a large tour. We jumped on a fire, fire hall that needed some more attention. It was cut, but there's, there's some more work that needs to be done. We're working with Fire at the Headquarters to improve some appearance there. So, and there are some, some houses that we owned, we contracted with a company, they didn't come up to expectations, but that's been resolved, and we don't expect these problems to recur. But anybody that has any issues with regard to weeds, lawns, et cetera, seven nine six I think number nine is continually hone our message and then convey it aggressively, effectively, and consistently. First exhibit I did was an attempt. I hope it helps a little. But we need, we need again, to be proud of the fact that we're creating jobs in the city, and we, we deserve some sort of recognition for that and some, what is it, a hand up from, from state authorities and legislative affairs in that regard. Number ten, stay the course or seek to improve it. And again, reiterating where we started, maintaining a focus on tax base enhancement while simultaneously reducing operating costs is the key to the city's long-term sustainability as an independent and thriving municipality. With that, I think I'll take a seat. Thank you very much.
Jim, thank you very much for a very comprehensive, not uplifting message, but it's the reality of the situation, and we've captured it well. I have really just a, a couple of questions that are very minor and they're, they're not taking issue with anything that's two percent, just for my own clarification. I, I noticed a couple of things under the capital project and perhaps Mike about keeping answer these. We've had complaints from residents in the north, south field at Greenfield, twelve to thirteen mile road about water pressure. Is water main replacement on Edwards?
That's in section.
Is that addressing that or?
That will, with the project that you'll see coming up before council grant a couple of weeks, it's for section thirteen, which is from the twelve foot to twelve mile. That will take care of that pressure area right there. And then after July first, we'll give project to do Edwards, which is on here. That will also tie into twelve mile, and that will help the pressure in that area.
Also, perhaps to Mike, resurfacing on nine mile. That money, the resurfacing from northwest or to Greenfield is coming from our major street?
It's major street where we're getting the, to the state, there's the three hour project.
Okay.
Which is a, like a milling fill type thing with curb, curb fixes and test basements.
Well, my, my question really is, can't the DDA contribute to that?
They are going to be looking at doing some, some contributions to crosswalks and some signal upgrades and that type of stuff.
I, I, I thought DDA money could be used for curbs and street paving, their enhancements.
They can do enhancement stuff.
I'm just thinking of tapping DDA money as opposed to just stretching our.
Our values.
Yeah.
You can clearly look into it.
The DDA has, you know, talked about new signage and fences, but it seems to me the roads are more important. I, I'd like, as someone in the police department, I didn't realize that we're still getting that auto set grant and two hundred and ninety-one thousand. Specifically, what is, what can that be spent for?
It's two auto set detectors.
It's two auto set detectors. I'm sorry.
Oh, it covers two detectives.
Yes. It covers two detectives, they're overtime, and they have to specifically work out with that though to get it. And there's benchmarks that they have to meet. Yeah. I remember the grant. I just, I didn't realize that it was, we're still receiving it. Somehow I lost that. Jim, you listed liquor license revenue. It's not a lot in the scheme of our revenue.
We consider it part of debt of the state shared revenue.
Okay.
And at that level, I'm not sure what, what that really is.
So we are, but you do anticipate receiving forty-seven thousand?
We did forty-seven thousand.
Okay. And no question?
Kind of like the one I was asking, we will, we will mark there.
And my understanding, and it's not in the detail that you provided to, to us, but that we do have utility savings from our energy improvement?
Yes, yeah, that, that reflects the facilities matrix, and we did reduce the matrix this year. So we are, we are, if anything in that regard, then it does cost because the main contributor to pay was built.
Those are my questions or comments or questions for now.
Yeah, I just had a few too. First, you know, this is extremely clear, extremely direct. It's definitely a reflection of hard work and, and budgeting expertise, so I want to give kudos to Mr. Sharette especially and his whole team. But I had a few questions because obviously we're not budgeting in a deficit, but we're operating with less money than the year before. And, you know, like you said, all we talk about is doing more with less. Are any of these reductions in city funds that we're using, is that, are we, are we bordering on doing less with less? I guess is my question. You know, what, what are the residents going to feel and what are we going to feel here in city hall in terms of an impact of working with less money? Obviously, there's, there's not a lot, a lot of, you know, discretionary funding. We can't move around a lot, so it's all kind of still filling up the same pot. But what, what are the implications in terms of our operations here, and what are the residents going to feel after July one of the year?
I'm rather astounded at the performance of our employees since over a period of time. The services are good. They're excellent. You know, we're, we're, we're reaching a challenging, we're going to be talking about this and that, but some retirements and some staffing levels that are extremely tight. But I can say this, that the service levels have not suffered significantly during this, during this period, and the reason is because we've been at it since two thousand and four. And so it can come out, someone leaves, perfect example, and you can add a budget personnel. Our budget department is one person. Two person left, what we did is we wholly into the way we reanalyze and we're done. What is it that we have to do? What could we do differently? And if you take that challenge, a lot of times you can find a different way. And that's not to demean the efforts of anybody who was there before. It's just that, for example, we found that there's a certain notification requirement that, that was dated back several years. Most cities are still doing it that way. And we found that you can basically do a one-liner, okay? And that conforms to the law and it gets the job done. So we save time, we save the cost or, or the, the amount of space that you take in the newsroom. That's just a small example, but I think the service one was the, frankly, not suffered. We're getting close. We're really maxing out people in terms of, of somebody attitude, you know, I guess. We have to understand that there's a lot of frustration out there. People are hurting. Sometimes, you know, they get a little bit more harsh with the employees than they should. But our people are resilient. We have to remember, you know, the department, I have to tell them, if you look at these numbers and the, and the work we're turning out, it's, it's amazing. It really is amazing. We're down the percentage and we're down, and we're still, we're not in a situation where the wake-up broke. We have a plan, a program here, we're asking people to kick in and kick in. Effort-wise and concession-wise, we're most part concession or two, but I don't want to make any of this anywhere because the jobs being on the street is tremendous.
I have one more question, and that goes back more specifically to the capital project. Are these, how are these going to come back to us? Are they coming back to us one by one, or can we take maybe even a holistic view of how they're prioritized? You know, it's ten million dollars that we're, we're able to allocate to some of these projects, but we find that we're losing out on some of these assessment appeals. Is there a way to prioritize these or look at them holistically rather than it comes up one by one by one and at the end?
The good news is the water and sewer are, are both that, that's a few of them. So they're okay. Major streets, we really need to do all these because we don't want to give up state federal monies, which are, you know, some of this is ten percent. You could be looking at spending forty thousand, eighty-five thousand dollars, it could be, it could be, you know, an eight or, eight or eight hundred thousand dollar job. So I would say we're going to, we will be doing this.
Okay.
Because we, again, we're not going to exhaust the entire allowance we have for fields. Not this year. Next year is a tighty. Next year, thirteen, fourteen, could be a challenge if, if these, you know, you know, the summary, because the, the density of number of the fields this year, we'll, we have enough reserve, you know, give council a lot of credit. We set up these funds, and people would like to do so, we leave these funds alone. Another city, they don't, they start crashing, moving money around. That's why we do here, cities with a lot of budget adjustments, that's not a good thing. Because that normally needs to move money around, and you don't want too much of that. We do have to do one of them this year, and it's for good reason. We budget it extremely tightly to try and recognize every save that we could get during the year, and if we're going to come up short, we got to make some, some of the money that we set up for fields forward. If we put any of it in budget, we'll have trouble. Twelve thirteen is another ballgame. We know that we cannot, we cannot offset over two million dollars by taking fees or any other savings. So that's why you save the budget this year. But we will get these jobs done this year.
Okay, next to mine?
There we go. And a drug law process, perhaps something about fifteen thousand dollars. There you go, and they, um, drug law process, um, that's something, uh, fifteen thousand dollars, a little under fifteen thousand. But this isn't a lot of money to pay you, uh, what, what they, uh, thirty-three. On the last, let's say the way insurance, uh, going, uh, these, these vacation transfers are when you, uh, bill people through the tax. And so, let's go ahead of, the reason you have it, uh, that amount in there is so you don't inflate your budget. So let's say you're billing a part of Michael Powsky's time to a project, okay? Uh, or engineering's time to a project. You don't want to show engineering in general fund and then show it again over a project fund. So wherever there's a duplication, like let's say fifty, fifty, charge a project. Charge fifty in general fund and fifty over in water and sewer. Okay, you show both fifties, you add them up, you're inflating your budget. So you, so, so you take one of the fifties out, that's a good thing. It's good, kind of, they are very, uh, because we, we take everyone up, okay, this year. Now, if they're, they're getting, it's less of them now because we're, a couple of them, less people fill out, uh, number one. Number two is we're streamlining wherever we can, uh, to avoid a lot of these crush turns, okay? That's what the others, I wanted to give to you. Uh, it's up, uh, fifteen thousand, so it tells me that, uh, it's crying up or, tell me the reason that a little amount of money is up. I'll pay thirty-three. You're in a drug lock?
Yeah.
Drug law process.
That's for the first time investigation assistance from the police.
Okay, so that's, that's. Yeah, what it does is, um, takes it out of tax money and will take into being funded by, uh, the, the good thing. The good thing.
Okay.
Um, that's forfeit of my, you see?
Yes.
I don't see it in the, the budget, is that a budget item or not? No, you don't, you don't budget that, you don't budget that, you don't know what, you could, you could do a serum, we have control. It sounds like, oh, yes.
Yeah, I have a number of questions. Um, on, uh, page six, is the bridge street, bridge running, you don't have to, I just have a question. How long are we supposed to be monitoring that? Even though we're reimbursed for the, for fifteen thousand dollars, something, for the, for the reimbursement, is that a continuously, an ongoing?
Uh, Mike, you have, you have knowledge of that? I know that before we, before we were getting, weren't getting reimbursed, it was quite crappy bar.
Yeah.
The reason is that this is a contribution to the entire science of civil engineering. That bridge over there, the amount of effort and dollars that we're, there's no way that data should be lost. That data needs to be, needs to be documented and used for research. So that's why we kept pushing for it, I don't know how many years or.
Well, we have a contract for at least one more year with M.D.A., I can tell you that. So that would be a year discretion, I guess, and, uh, if you want to keep going, keep monitoring it, keep approving it. Uh, but we do have one more year contract with, with, uh, M.D.A.
Yeah, I know, a couple of years ago, if I recall right, there was a number of the data collectors that had gone bad and had, had, did come down, paid for those or just?
Uh, there was a phone line that was, that was down at that spot.
Was that what it was?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, another one is traffic signal modernization, and that's, the no turn on red, I just mostly ignored. Uh, I was, I wrote a paragraph today, and the turnaround that's right in front of the LA business, um, there's a sign on the right hand side. But the people that are on the left hand side just get turned, you know, when the, a traffic brake, they just get turning and turning. It would seem to me that if, uh, a sign like the one at twelve and Greenfield, where there's a sign hanging right up by the, the traffic signal that says no turn on red. So that when they look up there, they see it, rather than have to look someplace else where, would be helpful. So when we get into the negotiation for the, that contract, for the contract for the signal modernization, would seem like that would be part of the conversation.
We can do that.
Okay.
That is why, um, going back to previous questions, but these do tend to come as onesies mostly.
Most of them are.
Well, some of them can be combined.
Most of these are gonna be onesies.
Most, most of them are onesies, uh, because they all have some familiar, uh, pieces to them, either funding, uh, different funding sources, um, representatives, different data processes. So that's why they tend to, I don't know, one, one of them.
Yeah, but if we keep that in mind, uh, that we're negotiating the onesies, maybe it will, will help. Either that or might as well take down the other signs because then nobody's gonna. Now, I have a question, and maybe you can, the explanation can help me out. Let's say we have a, an owner, and we're talking about the proposal, A, we're talking about WPW. Um, supposedly we have a building owner that has, owns two buildings in Southfield, and they're both partially filled. And he wants to play games with us. Can he move?
Oh, wow.
Uh, he moves people out of the one building. And into the other one, declares that his, he lost all the value of that one.
Quite a technique, but it's, it's, it's done.
Even though he's causing the problem himself? That doesn't seem quite right.
Is it, is it an area giving a tax, but?
Well, yeah, well, he could also appeal his taxes.
Yeah.
Plus, uh, the building that he's filled up, we can only raise his taxes of whatever the cost of.
So they out, they outsmart us to pull the line.
I guess, yeah. Okay, uh, somehow maybe we need to get to, to our legislator, uh, to our, either legislative people or lobbyists to, uh, include that into the discussion if they ever give that to WPW. Um, we have, when you talk about the unassigned general money development, uh, well, that has a negative impact on our foundation.
Uh, it would if we stopped the bonds, okay? We're going to be doing a refunding, we do a refunding, we've already brought in that in play.
Uh-huh.
Uh, what, what we're going to do is probably be a private placement, okay? Because we don't want Moody's. Moody's stand in course right now, we've got a good rating, because basically they're losing us, okay? If you look at our numbers, you know, what's there, I mean, it, they were, they were, you know, down.
Yeah, sure.
Means we have a lower rating, but they.
Well, I guess we don't.
They are convinced that, first of all, they like that we set aside your field dollars. They like the, the work we do to try and figure out, you know, they like the five year plan. They know that we do what we have to do. They know all about pink sheets, we use the people's pink sheets, and so, what we, what we, we convinced it. What we said is whatever we have to do, we'll do. They basically apply it into our, our, our methods. Um, the village helps with, it's definitely, so right now, until, so this, this circuit goes away, I, I want to stay away from, from initiating bond, bond issue. But that's the practice, that's the whole practice, so I have to get educated on that.
Okay.
In fact, I put in a call to our bond council today, we talked about bond likes, and there's, there's dollars to be saved on the one bond that's out there because of the interest rates are, you know, they're just at record.
Yes, yeah. Um, on page eighteen, you show zero in debt service, but don't we show, don't we sell out the bonds, like standing on the west side, the sewer gun, water and sewer gun?
Uh, yeah, they, but they are incorporated in the water and sewer budget. This, by debt service thing, um, that's where you have a, a, a village, just for, for a lot. For example, there's two kinds of bonds, LPGO, limited debt, general obligation bonds, that's what we normally do. And they go, they become the responsibility to the department, they put in their budget. If you go out and have a village, and you say, you know, we need to do this and that, and you go to the public, and they say you get two mils to do this and that, you have to show that.
Yeah, the debt service?
The debt service.
Okay, uh, the fact that where the money came from for those makes a difference?
Yeah, what, the nature of the, of the debt.
Right.
So, for example, Parks and Recreation has, uh, debts within their, within their, uh, their, uh, of, of, of cost of their budget. Library does, Streets, Streets is still paying for the work that we did a few years ago, um, so those are, but those are limited.
So it's all under that heading?
Yeah, limited debt, general obligation bonds.
Okay, uh, and page twenty, the police and fire station, that's based on investments. And if it's un, if it's underfunded, we have to make it that up in, in village. And went up about, not quite one pers, one mil.
Yeah, yeah, twice, that's a good.
Is, is there a limit on how much that can go?
No, not limited.
So if, if the investments are in a number, we can continue to raise the millions that we have, we have to cover?
Yeah, the problem is, is a four year average that goes on.
Okay.
And there's still a year or two, they were real bad to fall off. Once they fall off, then we'll probably get a reduction because, you know, of course, the pro market now, it's gone recently. They, they were doing just fine, and they, they, they do know they, uh, they, there is, there's been one investment written off that is, is a problem. Um, you got the files? Uh, I don't, I don't know the detail of it, I think that, that's probably something that, that, uh, you know, a council committee could get into or, uh, that, that would be to do this. Someone for the bench report to explain that detail. I don't have that, what I get is the actuary report, um, and, uh, we use the number that they say that you gotta put in there. That's the right way to do this, and, uh, you know, we can, we sit down with the actuaries and listen to their story, and we go all the way out, point the numbers, this and that. But when it's all done, they give you a percentage, percentage necessary, which you put in there.
Um, the ordinance that, um, we just talked about, about the grass is gonna be moved up to April, we're gonna start looking at it in April, should have, should have made. Um, I had a, a resident call me a couple of weeks ago about, uh, the neighbor next door, or the house next door, and this had salt grass. And it, this is a philosophy that I think we need to take a look at. Uh, we're asking the neighbors to improve the curb appeal. Um, the better the neighborhood becomes in improving the curb appeal, the empty homes, what people are not mowing their grass, makes the, the general appearance of the neighborhood looking even worse. Um, and I, I see moving the, uh, uh, use of the ordinance up to April can have some benefits. But it would seem to me that as the, you know, the rising height looks on boats, um, as the appearance, the curb appearance keeps coming up. It would seem like we would have a way of monitoring those folks that don't, uh, mow their lawn, rather than have the grass at twice the height and weeds at twelve inches. Because that would make it just really stand out. Uh, and I, you know, it's a tough thing because, it's like a movement target, to, uh, say, you know, last year you could have twelve inch weeds. This year we're only gonna allow six inch weeds because the whole neighborhood looks so much better. Um, and I don't know if we can do that and still be on the right side of the law, but, uh, the question, uh, is. And, and maybe it's something that we can encourage the homeowners associations to put the pressure on that, uh, or get to us with, uh, uh, for empty homes, to, to mow those. Uh, mow those laws, so I don't know, it, it's something that we need to think about.
You're suggesting maybe that the, the height that's permitted above which we cut?
Yes.
You would maybe look up and look at that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and.
We'll, we'll, we'll put it all together with the April.
Right, yeah, if, if mostly we ask is three inches tall, uh, I'm not suggesting that four inches gets somebody in trouble, but maybe eight inches is not a, a good number either. Um, and I'm gonna jump to another subject, and that was the, the draft of the homeowners manual. In there, it says that if you want to buy paper lawn mowers, you'd come here to, to City Hall to pick them up. It didn't say anything about fire, fire stations, are we no longer selling that fire stations?
We're still selling.
Okay, that should be in there, because if we're, we're gonna be customer oriented, we try, we ought to try to make it as friendly to the customers as possible. So they go to the friendly neighborhood fire station and pick up lawn mowers.
And those are the essentials we talked about.
Right, absolutely.
Everything that counts, counts.
Right, yeah, everything that, everything that counts, you can't count it necessarily. Okay, that's it. Cool, you did a, you did a great job, Jim.
Thank you, a whole lot of two of us, we have a good, uh, good staff, a lot of staff in work. Karen Ellie, who does do a lot of the work on the budget, uh, let her know that, that presentation and that, that we're, we're, right. More than mine.
We're all impressed.
Yeah.
I, I agree with Mr. Cretschel, he does a great job. And I know he said, Mr. Cretschel, he collected you at the administrative years ago, your expertise in finance, combined with being the administrator, which is a perfect man for this people.
Of course, I think, I think, I'll take that as a compliment.
Yeah, it is a compliment, it is a compliment, a compliment. But before I get into my comments, I do have a guest in the audience this evening. I'm gonna ask Daniel Cook to stand up, he's a sophomore at Georgetown University. He's majoring in international business and trade policy. His mom called me, who was my roommate at Michigan State, and she said, Daniel, want to come to the council and we need to see this?
This is great because we're an international city.
Yes, so I'm, so I'm.
I can't see, but I'm, I'm, I'm in a bad chair.
But I want to talk about the couple of them as it relates to the, um, budget tonight. And first is, um, parking meters, because I think we have to look at, although we've talked about the budget and talked about, uh, the decreases in the budget and decrease revenue that we had. And we, we tried to cut this one tie in ten different pieces, and I was cutting that same tie in ten pieces. But I think we've got to increase the budget, we can't keep cutting it and cutting it and cutting it. So I really do want to have, eventually, to say that some discussion about parking meters on the, to, to, uh, complex. Because that's gonna be one way that we can increase revenue. I think we, we, we've done a lot of cutting, this is great, and we're probably gonna have to do some more. But at some point in time, we're gonna have to increase revenue, I mean, we're gonna have to.
The sooner the better.
The sooner the better, we're gonna have to increase revenue. And as you said in your opening comments, imagination is more important than knowledge. So we've got to think about some new ways to, uh, increase revenue. And I just believe parking meters are just one of the many things that we can do to help the city. And, you know, when you look at other communities surrounding us, and you go to Rollo, I mean, if you park on the street, you're gonna pay for, you're gonna. And you know, when you look at other communities surrounding us, and you go to Rollo, I mean, if you park on the street, you're gonna pay for the, you know, that community. And you're burning gas, you park on the street, it's gonna pay for the end that community. And we've got fine land here, on the library side of Rollo, it's a complex that the days of the freebies are over, you know? We're just gonna open the buyer, so I do want us to explore the parking meters, um, that went earlier. Uh, can you explain to me, Jim, what is the economic mentality that's in this program? And I've seen that in a lot of other documents.
Um, it is a legislative initiative that says, um, we used to give statutory state shared revenue, which is a piece of the entire state shared revenue portion. Um, we used to give it as a, as a matter of right, based on some statistics.
We used to give?
We used to give, and they said, uh, we have a new, and we have a new concept. First thing they did is cut one-third right off the top of the document. So, it's gonna be a one-third, so they said, if you want to get the other two-thirds, you have to do something. You have to have a dashboard, um, which is not difficult, it's set up on here, you have to file it with the first officer on the website you vote. Uh, and you have to have a, a user scan to work with that. And you also have to, uh, uh, show cooperative ventures with other cities, uh, for solidations. I think that's the new credit, the one-hundred-and-fifty-one consolidations, that we counted, that we all bought, it's probably more. We stopped at one-fifty-one, uh, we came up with one-hundred and fifty credit, so they knew we weren't happy about not getting credit for one-fifty-one. So, we gave up a one, one-hundred and fifty, P P W, grading, roads, or whatever. And what are they doing for us? For payments.
For payments.
And you're recovering all the costs, and that's what we're gonna do, so that takes care. Now, we have, uh, lots of mechanism here, you know? Um, and then the other thing is, they have certain requirements for your fringe benefits. Uh, that got real messy, a lot of controversy about it, people couldn't figure it out, always thought it was ridiculous. And so, basically, they're kinda, they're kinda working it out, and so.
They are.
Yeah, they're still trying to.
Put an extra.
But we still got full credit, because we responded, we said, here's what we've done, we believe we're in performance with the rules that we, as we understand them. And they said, do I hear your advice? Uh, so, what happened is, we recovered the two-thirds, the most we could get. I only budgeted half of that, I figured, I don't know what's going on here. Maybe they're just trying to get, they're trying to wear people out, get rid of all, but which they did, some people were punished. They didn't have a lot of money, so they weren't gonna do, you know, the dashboard, which is gonna work out. So, um, you know, the, the, the medical and all the rest, uh, pension, uh, requirements. And they worked, uh, exercised themselves to get a, a, a consolidation, uh, one as well. Um, so, I only budgeted one-half of the two-thirds. We got it all, so here's the reason we didn't do it all, it's not that difficult.
Okay, so we'll be in other bits.
Once you work directly with treasury, we'll do that. If you use all kinds of other mechanisms that are out there, people have different programs, consulting firms have programs, I'm not pressed to any of them. With right treasury, they give you a format, valid format, pretty easy, once, once you've done it one year.
I just, well, I think that economic conference that we've particularly continued, and one of the things they told us to do as we approach this, uh, hearing, is to put it on the table for every department, that every department look at what we're providing services for, and see that there's certain ways that we can attach these to it. They put a challenge to it, they said, have each, each of your departments go through what they're currently doing, and treat it.
We'll, we'll give it a try, but I'm telling you, when it comes to fees, especially in Collier, especially banks, okay? Uh, we're fair, we do it the right way, and we do a notification, but we do not put up bank own bonds that are not any bank stuff. And, uh, you know, we, we force the ordinances with here. We have zero tolerance for people that can walk parking handicap spots, that's just not right. If they can walk, you can part with all the program. So, I think we're doing pretty well, but as a matter of fact, we got two new places out here. Uh, we've got the, the assessing one for fifty thousand.
Property transfer.
Property transfer, um, basically, it's, uh, that people who aren't filing it in a timely manner, we've given a notification bespoke to them. Uh, if they don't file, that's a hassle for us, because we need to know who's, who's homestead, who's not, who's not homestead.
We could just give that, you know.
We, uh, we are looking for adjustments.
Or look for adjustments, and you know, one thing I thought about, we do this, people, I see them on locations, so many, and, and so many various programs. You know, if there's anybody we could charge for them, you know, going out to the community.
We do. We do, and it all goes in the table, that's okay.
That's okay, but just looking at, uh, various ways that we can capture, uh, again, revenue, and increasing our revenue.
We do have a parking meter, I agree.
Okay, can we give that?
Uh, so, actually, let's not say meters, a parking expert in all kinds of areas, because Jerry went to Parking School.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they punished them all there.
We, we spoke this morning, and we're gonna get together and.
These people, this was such a workout, they didn't give you water. Did they give you water?
What's that?
They never, they never gave you even a snack.
No.
No water.
No snacks, no water, I mean, they're, they're bones conference.
So, we'll be hearing about that.
Uh, I, should we have a referral net, this is gonna be a workout.
Yeah, we're, we're starting to find a.
Okay, for the parking.
Yep.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at it. There's, there's different approaches.
Yeah.
And, uh, we won't burden the audience with all the details, and I heard quite better. I don't know if this, what I'm gonna ask the teams in the body of the ring, they've made, uh, the, from A T and T to Comcast, the fee, the franchise fee, and from A T and T to the pay fee. I have a pay fee, we all pay for the pay fee, but we don't use A T and T, although they're part of the people system in South Hill. All right?
Both Comcast.
They have a franchise.
Yeah, both Comcast and A T and T is the pay fee.
I don't use A T and T, why should I change it to A T and T? Everybody.
Everyone. They have.
So, you have A T and T?
I don't have.
He has Comcast.
Oh, you have Comcast.
I'm in.
Well, then you're paying your pay fee on Comcast, you're not paying A T and T.
If they can't keep billing me on it, who?
His phone is A T and T.
For nine eleven.
Yeah, it's gotta be, yeah, because if you're, Comcast would have a five percent franchise fee and a three percent pay fee, and that would appear on your Comcast bill. So, if there's an A T and T mention, it's gotta be.
On my bill.
Would you want my bill?
Nine one one.
Do that, do that, go from seven nine one one on my bill. So, I see, and then I'm assuming it was A T and T.
Well, A T and T on their bill, but their.
Comcast, I pay a franchise fee, three dollars and ninety cents to Comcast.
Mm-hmm.
So, I started maybe wanting to wait till A T and T.
You shouldn't be, Comcast is.
On my bill.
Well.
Unless you have Uber's.
Right, right, he thinks he doesn't need it on Comcast, so each of them would have stuff a pay fee depending on which service you ask.
I got Comcast.
Then, you know, we could look, we could look at that, just try to see what that is, but it shouldn't be a pay fee, but it shouldn't be.
Why don't you have him bring it in?
Yeah, no, if you brought it in, we'll take a look at it.
I'll run my way back.
Yeah.
My expertise with regard to this is virtually none.
Yeah, I mean, they, they each charge a pay fee, but it shouldn't be an A T and T pay fee on a Comcast bill, that shouldn't happen.
I got it, I guess.
I am.
Oh, I will, I'm gonna fight.
Yeah, the other thing that, on page twenty-four, um, we, I think, we need to do is, because the, uh, the, uh, change in these, these two thousand, uh, this is two thousand, what's it, two thousand?
Uh, there's less employees involved.
Less employees, as well as.
And, and the eleven percent decrease in taxes, the tax, the tax, the eleven percent decrease in the taxable values. So, uh, when you take, actually, it went down more than that, but it's fifty thousand, we've, we've pulled in term business contraction. So, basically, less people.
Oh, yeah. Now, when you look at the conversation with the state, with the decrease, is that what it's all about?
Oh, these are tax revenues only, yeah, so it's a decrease of eleven percent, all the way. Business contraction is only two point four, the reason is, we made up with fifty grand, otherwise, it would've been, oh, like, fifty-seven, or fifty thousand off of there. Is there a tax revenue?
Oh, there's.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah.
See, page thirty-three. You get the water and food, uh, two of them, that's fifteen taxes, so I, uh, don't say.
Yes, you got capital in there, you got product water, and you got maybe.
You got capital, water, and business.
Yeah, uh, what we're, what we're saying is, the budget itself went up three point three, but within that budget, the cost of water, sewer services, went up nine percent, uh, authorities, eight, eight point nine nine, eight point nine percent. Uh, they're proposing an increase in the water, uh, gauge to the customer, water sewer, five, five point oh three percent. We're saying, that's good, because it's less than eight point nine, if the authorities put through, but let's see if we can act it out some more, because there's, there's just a sort of psychology, this five percent, we went up a little five percent, we'll get it to a little five percent, it's closer, we'll figure out how to do it. Uh, the final budget will, uh, will have a slight change in the water, uh, water budget, because we're kind of low on the fee, we're, 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 we're a little bit five percent. Another one should still be increased, but it will not be increased by a little three.
On the other issue I had, I think, for, is the use of technology, and I think, particularly as it relates to seven nine two I, and the Twitter, and the Facebook, and, and, um, how can we improve using that technology, you know, uh, people that are still notifying us of various code violations? Can we, can we see how we can expand, uh, the sort of base for, uh, how people communicate, uh, in the texting, as it relates to that?
So, we need the equivalent of a junior address.
Address, yeah, remember that we can, you know, texting code violations, uh, even in the community, again, part of being a great city is how we promote ourselves, and just using, uh, our current technology to promote outfield, and with our residents as well as our businesses. Because when you look at the breakdown of the business community, I mean, you know, sixty-five percent, you know, yeah, you've got some challenges with, uh, the request for, uh, the taxes, but that's a plus to have a community that we've got.
We have to keep in mind that the majority of our businesses, unfortunately, it's a march into that.
Okay.
But there are a lot of people that are just concentrating on, on, uh, you know, doing their, like, performing the service that they, that they provide, or manufacturing the product, or whatever, and they, they're not, you know.
Right, so I mean, we've got, uh, we've got some people that are here, so.
We do.
The more we, we keep them happy, the more we keep our community alive, the more we keep our population alive. I mean, we can, we can build this drive, we can, uh, look good as we make this, this turn, and we need to come.
And this is why, you know, the, 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 this people are, people are special assessed, and they're not getting results, so that's, that's not.
And, you know, I take this comment, but I don't make a cheap decision, but I can, and I share it with everyone, if they look up. There's some great things that we can do as a city, uh, one of the.
You love it, no?
No, 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 we're not, we're not. And one of the takeaways, like, is that we always talk about business, uh, development, and the businesses, but you really have to take the customer value there. And you really have to take care of, of the base, and the base, and, uh, and the business community. So, we'll do that as later day, at your level. Uh, lastly, I really think, as we move forward, because we had, you know, looking at the number of full-time employees that we've lost over the years, I am believing, it's even, it's a rose and fall, see, how we really can engage, the back of the program, the society on board, of this, and, um, mainly, mainly the labor of services, and just other areas of the city that we can, uh, bring them on board to help us, you know, make. That's it.
Thank you, uh, I wanna compliment, um, Mr. Scherett, we started early in this process, and, uh, I'm just always impressed, and, uh, I know how hard you work on this, I wanna compliment you. I wanted to, um, just focus on two things on the one summary page wrap-up, and that's the past space focuses on, uh, new construction come out from under the limits proposal, uh, um, this number five, the, the pink sheet. And I, I really, I really would like to stress that the council really looked at new construction opportunities. We have to make the decisions that's best for the, our community, but we have to understand that that is a jewel of an opportunity to increase our tax base. And when we look at, uh, proposals that come into the city, that we are looking at also the opportunity to increase our tax base. Um, number six, too, is seek creative breakthroughs in approach in existing commercial properties. We have some, um, we're, the number of obsolete uses in our commercial property is increasing in South Hill. And through our planner and our building department, we should, I think, should be more aggressive in looking at opportunities for, um, really taking obsolete use out of the, uh, our tax structure, and how we can redevelop that and encourage redevelopment. And so, when people come and they, we know about uses they want, and they look at some of our buildings now as getting older, and they say, you know, they're not energy efficient, they're not, you know, practical, um, we can partner with them, and ac- actually have, um, instead of just vacant lots, we now have vacant buildings, and we can say, this is a prime example of, uh, redevelopment or obsolete, taking down obsolete buildings, because once you clear it out, it's way up across the street, the economy wasn't bad. Uh, but we have had some, some proposals, they weren't the right ones, that've come forth, from seeing that vacant land. So, I just, I just wanna really say, as we do our budget today, we've actually been given some, some really thought processes that we're gonna have to use throughout the year, as we look at developments and opportunity to increase our, our, um, our tax base. Couple things I want to bring up to kind of piggyback on the other comments that have been made about opportunities to increase revenue. And I'm, I may, this may sound really petty, but to see those ice cream trucks parked at our parks for, for eight hours a day with no fee, I, I'm not against them parking there, we're not going, but why should they be able to do that without a fee? They're making.
Question, we, uh, would that.
We license, we license ice cream trucks, it should be a south hill.
Would that encourage any others to, to, to say that's a my. If that encourages others to, to, to say that's a margin above fees, uh, we've been doing pretty well.
Uh, that's just one, I, I mean, if we wouldn't allow them to sit on our property and, and make money, we wouldn't allow them to sit for a day off. But we let them do it at our parks all the time. Let them pay a fee to do that, if they want to do that. Also, we park a long time, and I think the time has come that we have businesses to register. I was in another city, and I saw the license on the wall, and this is a registered business in the city. And I think that time, that time has come. We are registering vacant property, rental property, we do all this in the residential community, but we're not doing anything in the business community. I think it helps us, because we really don't have a good sense of what we have in the city, because there's no requirement to, uh, and I don't want it to be punitive, I think it helps us when we're talking about our business base and what do we have. Um, and then the other thing, we were talking about, um, the, uh, ambassador program. And I just recently had a, uh, resident that said, I want to become a police reserve. And I, I told him I didn't know what the process was, and found out we don't have a police reserve program. And, uh, I know I've, I talked to you about this, Jim, but other communities have police reserves. Is that a program that we can implement here where we get the community involved, where you actually have a, um, a volunteer program for people to be involved in the community, and is it a good thing for us to do? Uh, I think it's something we should look into. Lastly, I want to say that this doing more with less, or, or less with less, we will never have a grip on that until we do a real organizational chart. I say this every time. We have to know how many seats we have in each department and what they're doing. When I came onto this council, I was always presented with an organizational chart, and I could literally see what the departments were, who was sitting there, and it gave you this, this visual, um, uh, compliment to the budget. And, um, right now, because of all the people leaving, and there's more that will be leaving, um, and I have said this before, is, Jim, you work so hard, and it's, it's become normal. But, we are at the point where we're so there, we are so there, that, um, we must invest in cross, we're doing a cross training, that's no doubt. But, succession plan is gonna become a, not become, it's the reality that we're having to face. And we're praying for good health for all of our employees right now. I mean, that's, that's, that's my deal, we let all the employees and keep them healthy.
There's some deep issues in, in all of this that we can just spend some quality time on.
We do. And, 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 you know, this is not a complaint.
People on board, too.
This is not a complaint, but this is a necessity for us to, to continue to operate this, this city half today. And this budget is that we're gonna have to have that organizational chart and that succession plan. Um, and the other thing I want to talk to you that, um, a conference that, that I attended on a different subject, they talked about how we need to really focus on wellness of our people, because we are pushing them harder. We are, they are aging, and we need to have, and we, and you, you actually reduce your, there's premiums that reduce, uh, the, the, our obligations for healthcare costs when we have a very active wellness program. And I know we have started that, but I haven't seen it grow.
We, 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 uh, we have, uh, we cut, we trimmed back some of it, because frankly, we used to sponsor people to get certain items, because it was great, like the quality. Because frankly, I didn't like that, um, we still have sponsorship, we'll pay for everything, short of any board clinic, people stopped. We didn't have the chances to, to agree, uh, but it's been successful. Uh, but, uh, that, and we do have, um, employee physicals in certain areas, uh, police fire have physicals, um, and, uh, we have specific... Um, but there's rooms to mark, and I think we need to, to look at reinvigorating that, because, uh, you, you, you could save lives, serious illness, all you need to do is find a, get one serious illness where you have to move. So, and this happened, where people, that's, that's the issue. And that pays a whole lot of wellness programs, because we're experience rated, we have...
Now, I, I want to compliment our public safety, because sometimes when I'm watching TV and I look at other cities, and they, some of the law enforcement people are so overweight, I just wonder how they can be effective. And, and ours appear to be healthier, and, uh, when it comes to, um, you know, their status of being, and I, I want to compliment them. Uh, because when it's time to chase them, I, I want them to work.
We, we have, we have a couple of folks that we do some work, they're not in the audience. I'm looking, Brian's... They're not in the audience, anywhere in the audience, but, uh...
But those are my comments, I, I, I really want us to look at the organizational chart, because we can look at it. It is gonna be for me, because we, we talk about, we look at people who are suggesting retirement. Some of these are going to create surprises in our operation, and we need to... And thank you, Jim, for everything.
Thank you. Uh, the, the art chart, we do, we do print one, uh, so, even if we don't have one, it's, it's all that we need. It's the requirement of the audience to do it, but what we're gonna need is like, an overall, and a breakout, is, is more retail. Because we, we got, we got some restrictions, and people, uh, people are eligible, we, uh, we, we're in a test, kind of, on a, on a subject, all of their labor issues.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention that one time, we did have a commercial certificate, uh, and on my business, we used to use classes, twenty dollars, and then legal back into it, and, and then, then you have to provide some kind of a service, like the inspection, if they, if they continue to collect...
Just for the registration, we were registering at one time, is what you're saying?
We were giving us a little...
Right, same thing.
...kind of, a quick...
Okay.
You know, the twenty dollar fee, and they, but then they, they lost it, it was for, they used to sign those things, so...
Warrior, warrior. Uh, we're gonna go order...
We're gonna have a database, so...
Yeah, that's the thing. A reason for doing that.
Maybe, maybe the database is shared or something, I don't, we, we need to look into that.
We'll look into that.
But that, on fees in general, they have to be related to your costs, and you cannot, you know, run your operations.
You can't make a profit.
Yeah.
I don't know how they realize that the fee, I don't, it's a twenty dollars. And, and, and the other thing was that, and Mr. Sharet did get a hold of me, and we tried to get, we talked to Nancy about setting a date at the library, but that same thing that you're talking about, or anything, it's concessional. And I said, if you're concerned about that, we just can't get a, because it's gonna hurt us, I mean, it should be, not, it's...
We got it scheduled, I believe, at four, because, you know, maybe it's...
We're gonna schedule, danger of hurting...
We might need two meetings.
Yeah, we're gonna want to get into that, because it's getting bad, you know, so... Anyway, that's it.
Okay, um, I'm gonna take a five-minute break, and we can ask for the next question, thank you.
I thought, when we're at the investigator, he explained it, he...
Wait, you know, I like to work in them, so that's a lot, you know, really.
Pamela Gerald, P O Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. My telephone number is two four eight three five two nine one eight eight. Tonight, I want to talk about Southfield's stupid tree law. Um, first of all, Southfield, and I think most residents know, and, um, have been knowledgeable about this, that Southfield, the city, was built on swampland, and we are designated as Tree City USA. And that designation came from the Arbor Day Foundation, and we've had it for the last twenty-five years, and that's good to be a Tree City USA. But this is how we became Tree City USA, not because we're necessarily doing the right thing, or we were selected out of thousands of cities in the United States. We basically met four standards. The first standard was, we have a tree board or a department, we have a tree care ordinance, we have a community forestry, uh, program with, and, with an annual capital expenditures of at least two dollars per capita, and we have a proclamation observing Arbor Day Foundation. And this is a good thing to have, because it basically just allows us to apply for grants from the state forestry department. All of you have heard about the benefits of trees. You've heard about the beautification, oxygen, shade, possibly lowering your air conditioning bills. Trees can also provide habitation for wildlife, they can increase the value of your real estate, and trees can also suck up the water to alleviate pressure on the county's drain system. What you are not told about trees are the potential problems. Tree roots can expand, causing a break in the structural foundation. Trees can become a hazard for D T E power lines, and we have not been doing a good job assisting and working with D E, D T E to be able to do that. Uh, storms can also cause trees to fall on your house, or on the road, in the middle of the road, and a resident sends a certified letter to our tree department, or our tree lady, advising the city about the same thing, and a tree did fall over the road, and it's purported that a resident hit that tree and had a car accident. So, we could do a little bit better on that. Trees also contribute to wildfires, they can block the sanitary sewers, and they can also be a screen for criminal activity. Now, what I think the city needs to do, the city needs to present to, did you want to say something, Mr. Fakasi? Because I'm trying to speak, and I'm trying to speak, and I, I, I think that I'm being a little bit distracted, uh, by you. So, if you can talk to the city attorney when you're speaking at the table, I'll talk to a resident, and I'll talk to a resident when I need to. Okay, while you're speaking. Now, we have a tree fund, and I think that it, it's not a good thing to insist that residents don't have a right to decide if they want to have trees on their property. If you want to cut a tree down, you're supposed to pull a permit. So, you're basically alerting the city to the fact that you are going to do some modifications in your yard. If you decide that you don't want trees in your yard, the city makes you pay into this interest-bearing tree fund account, and they use the money to plant it, to plant trees elsewhere in the city where they need it. Now, residents should not be responsible for doing that. It is the city's responsibility, it is the forestry department's responsibility, applying for those grants, to get money for those trees. Now, how you can encourage a resident to plant trees is giving them a fifty percent subsidy, which I think we just recently started doing, or giving them trees at a reduced price. This will encourage people to tran, uh, this will encourage people to plant trees. When people pull a permit, they're doing the right thing. When people just cut down trees, like it's purported about the gentleman with the charter buses, uh, he purportedly cut down trees without pulling a permit, and the city didn't know about it. All of this can just be resolved if we were to be a little bit more code enforcement oriented. And I'm pleased to say that I had a very nice conversation with our code enforcement director, Mr. Gerald Witkowski. I made a suggestion about having a town hall meeting in which the residents will get an opportunity to come and talk with code enforcement, and code enforcement would have an opportunity to do some real serious dialogue, and say what the city expects when you move in, how they code enforce, so we can alleviate this perception of code enforcement being biased. And I wanted to also say, too, that if we're going to explore the options of meters in the city, um, we need to be careful with that, because we don't want residents suggesting that we have meters in church parking lots.
Your time is up.
Thank you so much. Oh, and also, um...
Mr. Gerald, your time is up.
Our Southfield law, thank you.
I'd just like to say to council, uh, please wait until everyone has spoken, if you have anything you want to say, and if the speakers are, the comments, please wait until everyone has spoken, and then I'll give Mr. Sharet a chance if he wishes to, to, for, for...
This is a council meeting.
Yeah.
If I want to speak to the city attorney, I will, okay?
Right. She's not having the right to say what she says to you. Um, Mr...
She's got that right, because that's about it.
I understand. Um, Mr. Mullin, Gerard Mullin. Is Mr. Mullin here? Coming, okay. Hey, Mr. Goss, you're up, you have five minutes.
Madam President, my name is Gerard Mullin. I am proud to say that since nineteen sixty-eight, I've lived at seventeen eight eighty Louis Street, and since nineteen sixty-one, I've worked here in this city, my city, the great city of Southfield. Tonight, I'm here to talk about council. When you folks go on your next Michigan Municipal League Capitol Conference up there in Lansing, I would like to suggest that you folks sign up for the following seminars. Number one, proper legal notices. Number two, proper parliamentary procedures. Number three, proper decorum. Number four, sidewalks. Number five, bicycles. And finally, number six, how to write a fracking resolution. Thank you, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mullin. Mr. Sharet, a question from Stephanie English.
Stephanie English, two eight seven three five, San Carlos, Southfield four zero seven six. And I'd first like to say, Mr. Sharet, you do rock, and you did an excellent job with the, uh, budget. Good evening, everyone. I was unable to speak at last week's May fourteenth council meeting, but I want you to pretend that today is May fourteenth, so that you will be able to fully capture the message that I bring this evening. This account was given to me not by officers who work for the police department, but instead by civilian employees who work at the police headquarters. This is a rarity, in that most of my speaking efforts over the last eight months have been in, in acting as an ad hoc ombudsman for the police department officers who are still fighting hard to eliminate current acting chief Brian Gerald from being chosen as the permanent chief of police. Instead of the officers making an effort to deliver detail pertaining to unbecoming actions of Mr. Gerald, I've been asked to deliver this account by certain civilians who work for the police department. Exactly one year ago today, May fourteenth, two thousand and eleven, was the last employment day for former chief of police Joe Thomas. On this day, Chief Thomas executed one of his last leadership actions in appointing two lieutenants to lead the department, along with Brian Gerald, who was deputy chief at the time.